Can you hear me?
To the United States of America and to the Republic which stands my nation under our individual liberty and justice.
Reading an approval of the minutes from the last meeting held on June 30, 2021. Questions? All in favor? Aye. Opportunity for the public to address the board on an agenda higher than. Resolutions, first one, 21-0187, approving current table.
Be it resolved with the commission's Lockawana County here by improving on payables, Lockawana County's general fund. Turn this off. Lockawana County's general fund numbers, 324-291-325214, inclusive totaling $5,261,066.36. A lot of electronic fund transfers include all payroll accounts totaling $11,373,029.51. Adapted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County held on July 7, 2021. Commissioner?
Do I have a motion to approve or accept handles?
Motion.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0181, approving the financing by the Health and Welfare Authority to undertake a project for Johnson College.
Whereas pursuant to Pennsylvania Municipalities Act as amended, the county of Lockawana, Pennsylvania, together with the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania, created the Scranton-Lockawana Health and Welfare Authority to act as a financing authority for projects serving the city and/or county. And whereas OS Johnson Technical Institute has requested the authority to issue its revenue notes in one or more series in the aggregate and principal amount not to exceed $6.5 million to finance, refinance, and/or reimburse a project for the benefit of the borrower consisting of all and/or any of the following: a) designing, acquiring, constructing, renovating, improving furnishing and equipping newer facilities existing and existing facilities of the borrower; b) designing, acquiring, constructing, equipping of site, infrastructure, parking improvements, and various other capital improvements to the borrower's existing facilities, and acquiring various capital equipment for use in or in connection with the facilities the borrower; c) refunding all or any proportion of the borrower's outstanding debtness; d) funding working capital for the borrower; and e) funding contingencies and paying all or a portion of the costs and expenses of issuance of the note. And whereas the authority has authorized the issuance of the note concerning to a resolution adopted by the authority on June 17, 2021, subject to the approval of the project of the city and by the county, and whereas by the approval of this board, as evidenced by this resolution, will enable the authority to finance the project without imposing any liability on the county or its citizens or taxpayers with respect to the notes. And whereas Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended the code, that the applicable elected representative of the governmental unit on behalf of which the bond or notes issued, and of each governmental unit having jurisdiction over the area in which any facility with respect to which financing is to be provided for the net proceeds of such bonds or notes is located, approve such notes after a public hearing in order for a private activity bond to be qualified bond under the code. Whereas this board is the applicable elected representative of the county within the meaning of the code, and whereas in accordance with Section 147F of the code, a public hearing was held by the authority at 4:00 PM local time on June 22, 2021, in connection with the issuance of the notes, and a report of such hearing has been provided to this board. And whereas the county desires to approve the financing of the project for the benefit of the borrower and to determine that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people in the area served by the borrower and the project to have the project financed by and through the authority. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Lockawana hereby resolves that, number one, the issuance of the notes by the authority in the aggregate principal amount not in excess of $6.5 million, and the use of the proceeds of the notes to finance the project is hereby approved. Number two, it is hereby declared desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people in the county of Lockawana, Pennsylvania, to have the authority issue of the notes for the purpose of financing the project. Number three, the foregoing action of this board shall not in any way pledge or obligate the credit or taxing power of the county of Lockawana, Pennsylvania, nor shall the county be liable for the payment of principal of premium, if any, or interest on the notes or any other costs related thereto, adopted in a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County held on July 7, 2021. Madam Commissioner here to speak upon that is Mr. Brian, I'm sorry, Attorney Brian Goodwin.
Good morning. It's nice to see everybody in person. This is our typical health, safety, and welfare resolution whenever the authority does a tax-free financing, similar to the ones that you've seen before for other projects. For Johnson, as we talked about at the work session, this is a replacement of their main administrative building, their Richmond Hall at the right as you come onto campus, and they're replacing that entire building. They're doing some other site work, also doing a small refunding, but the main project is the replacement of that building. Happy to answer any questions. As mentioned in the resolution, no liability on the county. It's really just a conduit financing. It's one of the steps that we have to go through whenever we do a tax-free financing.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve Resolution 21-0181.
Motion.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Resolution 21-0182, approving the financing by the Health and Welfare Authority of certain capital projects for the benefit of Marywood University.
Whereas the Scranton-Lockawana County Health and Welfare Authority is a municipality authority incorporated pursuant to a resolution of the county of Lockawana, Pennsylvania, and a resolution of the city of Scranton-Lockawana County, Pennsylvania, and is existing under and governed by the provisions of the Municipality Authorities Act of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania 530 CS 5601, Act 22 of 2001, effective June 13 to June 19, 2001, and amended the Municipality Authorities Act of 1945, amended and supplemented. And whereas the Authorities Act permits the authority to assist in the financing of buildings and facilities for private, nonprofit, nonsecretary colleges, which are determined by the authority to be eligible educational institutions. And whereas Marywood University has represented to the authority that it operates a private university which provides services on a nonsecretary basis and is a nonprofit corporation existing under the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas the university previously requested that the authority finance a project consisting of, among other things, all or any of the following: one, the acquisition, design, construction, renovation, equipping, and furnishing of new facilities and improvements in additions to the existing facilities of the university, including but not limited to the facility upgrades and energy projects consisting of boiler, systems replacement, decentralization of the campus streamline, and infrastructure improvements, and various other capital improvements to the university's existing facilities, and the acquisition of capital equipment for use in or in connection with the facilities of the university; two, funding, if applicable, capitalized interest on the bonds, and/or necessary reserves for the bonds; and three, financing contingencies and paying the costs and expenses incident to the issuance of the bonds. Whereas pursuant to the 2019 project, the university previously determined to authorize the proper officers of the university to authorize the authority to serve as a conduit issuer for a project of the university and issue up to $10 million aggregate principal amount of one or more series of its taxes and/or taxable revenue bonds or notes. And whereas the 2019 note was purchased by a lender, the Fidelie Deposit and Discount Bank, concerned to the terms of a commitment letter term sheet from the bank to the university. And whereas the 2019 note was issued as tax-exempt debt pursuant to the loan agreement or similar instrument between the authority and the bank, and whereas the bank has offered a reduced modified tax-exempt interest rate of 3.5% on the 2019 note, and whereas the modified rate is a significant rate reduction, and the modified rate operates in such a fashion as to be classified as a reissueance under the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended. And whereas the university has requested the authority bank and master trustee to take whatever steps are necessary under a master trust indenture and supplement, including but not limited to entering into such agreement notes, notes, certificates, and other debt instruments, obtaining such consents as may be required to effectuate and secure the modified rate. And whereas pursuant to the requirements of the act and based upon the representations of the university, the authority has determined that the university qualifies as an eligible educational institution under the regulations of the authority and under the provisions of the act, and the authority has made necessary findings of fact as required by the act. And whereas the university desires and has determined to take those steps necessary to effect the reissuance of the 2019 note through a new series of debt designated as the Scranton-Lockawana Health and Welfare Revenue Note Series of 2021, or such other designation as shall be determined by the parties. And whereas the university has approved the 2021 project, and in connection therewith, the execution and delivery by the university of such amended rate commitment as may be required with the bank. And whereas the authority desires to finance the 2021 project through a sale of one or more revenue bonds or notes, and in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $10 million. And whereas after inquiry and based upon the representations of the university, the authority has determined that the financing for the 2021 project through the issuance of the 2021 note will serve the purposes of the act. And whereas the 2021 note shall be deemed designated as a qualified tax-exempt obligations pursuant to Section 265b32d2 of the code. And whereas the county approves the financing of the 2021 project for the benefit of the university, and has determined that it is in the best interest of the people of the county and the area served by the university in the 2021 project, and is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people in the county and in the area served by the university in the 2021 project to have the 2021 project provided and undertaken by the authority. And now therefore be it resolved by the board as follows: number one, in connection with the financing of the 2021 project by the authority, the Board of Commissioners of the county hereby declares it to be desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the county and in the area served by the university and the 2021 project to have the 2021 project provided by and financed through the authority. Number two, the approval granted hereby shall not in any way pledge or obligate the credit or taxing power of the county, nor shall the county be liable for the payment of the principal of or interest on any obligations issued by the authority in connection with the 2021 project. Number three, the county acknowledges that the authority is entitled to rely upon and will rely upon the findings and determinations of the county as set forth in paragraph one above. Number four, this resolution shall become effective immediately. Number five, in the event that any provision, section, sentence, clause, or part of this resolution shall be held to be invalid, such invalidity shall not affect or impair any remaining provision, section, sentence, or clause of this resolution. It being the intent of the county that such remainder shall be and remain in full force and effect. Number six, all resolutions or parts of resolutions inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Adapted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County held on July 7, 2021. Madam Commissioner, once again, here is Attorney Brian Goodwin.
Good morning again. That was actually a very long resolution for something that's very simple for Marywood. They did an energy project in 2019, and I apologize for that.
Thanks.
In 2019, they did an energy project on their campus. All they're doing now is the bank is giving them a lower interest rate on that. So it's technically a refunding, so we have to do the approvals again since it is a new issue for tax purposes, but that's really all that's going on. There's no new money. It's just a refunding of that '19 deal. It's the same health, safety, and welfare resolution that we had for Johnson a couple minutes ago.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve 21-0182.
Motion.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And one of these days, I'll get these resolutions much shorter. Have a nice day.
Resolution 21-0183, approving the Bulletproof Vest Partnership application.
Whereas the Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership funding will cover the reimbursement of up to 50% of total cost of 25 needed with Bulletproof Vest for the Lockawana County District Attorney's Office Detective Division, Lockawana County Prison, and the Lockawana County SWAT team with a maximum allowable funding amount of $12,772. Whereas Lockawana County is hereby authorized, the Lockawana County District Attorney Mark Powell to accept, sign, and authorize all documents related to this grant award. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County is hereby approved, the submission of the Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest partnership in the maximum allowable funding amount of $12,772, and the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County is hereby certified that foregoing is a true and correct copy of the resolution adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners. Now therefore be it resolved by the authority of the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County to hereby approve the submission of this application, and is hereby resolved by the authority of the same that the District Attorney of Lockawana County can't be authorized and directed to sign the acceptance of this award. Adapted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County held on July 7, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is the District Attorney's Project Mayor, Manager, Commissioner, and Attorney General.
Hello. It's nice to finally meet everybody in person. So as stated, this funding would essentially fund 25 vests, which are all of the vests that will be expiring, for the DA Detectives, Lockawana County Prison, and the SWAT team. So this will fund up to 50% of the replacement of all of those needed vests over the next two years.
I'll take a motion to 21-0183. On the question? All in favor? Resolution 21-0184, approving a grant application for the District Attorney's Office.
Whereas the overall goal of Lockawana County Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Opioid Affective Youth Initiative Grant Application is to establish a robust and multidisciplinary drug-endangered children's alliance in partnership with the National Alliance for Drug Endangered Children's, with the goal of identifying and implementing initiatives to provide effective linkage to prevention, intervention, diversion, and treatment programs and strategies to children, youth, and families impacted by opioid and other substance abuse disorders who out Lockawana County. Whereas Lockawana County is hereby authorized, the Lockawana County District Attorney Mark Powell, to accept, sign, and authorize all documents related to this grant award. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County is hereby approved, the submission of the 2021 opioid affected youth initiative grant application in the amount of $750,000. And the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County is hereby certified that the foregoing is a true and correct copy of the resolution adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners. Now therefore be it resolved by the authority of the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County, is hereby approved, the submission of this application, and is hereby resolved by the authority of the same, the District Attorney of Lockawana County be authorized and directed to sign the acceptance of this award. Adapted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County held on July 7, 2021. Once again, Madam Commissioner, here is Attorney General.
So essentially, this grant would be a three-year project that would work to work more collaboratively between agencies, and as stated, would create a multidisciplinary drug-endangered children's alliance for the county. We will be partnering with the National Alliance for Drug Endangered Children if funded. And I said the overall goal is essentially just to identify these kids more effectively and get them into treatment for children, youth, and families who are negatively impacted by opioid and other drug use.
Motion for approval of Resolution 21-0184.
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Karina. Thank you. Resolution 21-0185, approving an art-in-the-park event.
Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County is hereby approve their request by the Arcadia Corral for a art-in-the-park event in September at McDade Park. $2,800 to come from the Arts and Cultural Department. Adapted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County held on July 7, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Arts and Culture, Ms. Maria McGlue.
Hi. Good morning, everybody. Hope you're doing well. So this, with COVID, we had to reconfigure our Art in the Park program, which was normally very children-focused, everybody together in a small space, but we thought people still need positive things, so we are focusing more on performance where we can social distance. So this one, we are partnering with Arcadia Corral for a free public concert on September 19 in McDade Park.
Any questions for Maria? I'll take a motion to approve Resolution 21-0185.
Motion.
Do I have a second? You both made a motion. I'll give you a second.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
Resolution 21-0140, appointments to the Solid Waste Authority.
Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County is hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Lockawana County Solid Waste Authority: Joyce Atallah, P.O. Box 107, Fleetville, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2025. Nicholas Gabbard, 105 Templeton Drive, Dixon City, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2022. Be it afforded, resolve. At the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County is hereby appoint the following individuals to the Lockawana County Solid Waste Authority: Miss Miko, 1733 Adams Avenue, Dunmark, Two Philly, unexpired term of David Johns, which expires December 31, 2022. Adapted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County held on July 7, 2021. Madam Commissioner.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0140?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0186, appointment to the Lockawana County Library Board.
Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County is hereby appoint the following individuals to the Lockawana County Libraries Board: Maria Brennan, 69690, Laurel Street, Mayfield, Pennsylvania, 18433, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2021. Mary Rabble, 917 Greenfield Road, Moscow, Pennsylvania, 18444, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2023. Adapted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County held on July 7, 2021. Madam Commissioner.
And these reappointments or appointments, who made this recommendation? I can't think of Mary Gar.
Mary Gar.
Mary Gar. Okay. What is her function?
She's the curator of the library system.
Okay. I'm just asking the public here. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0186?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Chair Dominic, Commissioners Notorianni and Schirmack. First, let me thank you for the opportunity to publicly speak to the board. It is the first time that I have ever attended a county commissioners' meeting. My name is Keith Eckle. I'm a resident of Newton Township and a farmer. I would first want to compliment Commissioner Schirmack for raising this issue at the last meeting. I then began to read about it in the Scranton Times. And there are a couple of things that I want to raise with you today. The first one is the contract with the legal firm collecting the taxes. I'm not opposed. In fact, I think the program has worked very well with the county functioning as the agent with the city of Scranton. So make no mistake about that. I think that was very wise, and I pay my taxes timely, and I think all taxes should be collected. Having said that, I have a real problem with the negotiated contract. Why? I've been in business over 50 years. I never negotiated one purchase in those 50 years where two months later, it was determined that money should be returned. Not only returned, a 50% return. Why does that concern me as a taxpayer? Forgive me, but it raises questions in my mind as how effectively the county negotiates its deals. But I cannot envision one reason why you would ever sign on to a deal where the price evidently was double more than the cost. I urge the commissioners to look into that. I know there's questions about who has the responsibility for it. In some of my other roles in life, as a board chair, we had thousands of lawyers, but if we made a mistake, it came back to us. I'm concerned about that, and I think every resident in this county should be concerned about that. The second is what happens to the money that's returned? Now, I've indicated that I and my family have always paid our taxes timely, good times and bad times. But we're living in a pandemic, something that I nor any of you have lived through. I'm wearing a mask today because the county still mandates us coming into the building wearing a mask. I'm not opposed to that. All I'm pointing out is the county is still living in that structure. So is its taxpayers. I believe that our taxpayers should pay their taxes, but I absolutely do not believe they should be overcharged for them. And I strongly urge you, as you work through this matter, that ultimately those refunded, collected dollars go back to those taxpayers. I know they haven't been timely. I understand that. But we're living in difficult times. One could argue that those of us paid taxes were going to benefit from it. I don't want to benefit on somebody else's misfortune. I strongly believe that those dollars should be returned. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Hi, Joan. Joan Hoodwana, Scranton. I too want to speak about this arrangement of collecting delinquent taxes. I read all the articles, and I'm not questioning whether or not what you've done is legal. I have no legal training, so I assume it's legal, but I don't think it's right. Here we have a vendor who receives a no-bid contract. I guess it's the firm of Joyce Carmody and Moran, okay? And last year, for the entire year, they made $104,537 performing this function. And in April and May of this year, they made $287,626. Boy, does that sound like a sweetheart deal or what? And then when this issue comes up, they decide that they're going to give 5% of this 10% legal fee back to the county. So let me see, I got this right. The county gives them a no-bid contract, and a member of that firm is associated with the Tax Claim Bureau anyway. And then when there's a question raised, they send back 5% to the county. What do you think that looks like? Okay? When I served in the military, you could go to prison for the appearance of misconduct, not the fact, the mere appearance. I understand that the mayor and her staff didn't read the fine print. Shame on them. They'll probably never do that again. But I think that in next year's budget, this, even But I think that in next year's budget, this, even though it's a professional service, in the interest of serving the taxpayers, it should be bid out. And if the only legal way to do this under the Municipal Claim Tax Lean Act is to charge Scrantonians 10% and everyone else 1%, then that's the way it's going to have to be. Maybe Scrantonians should move across the line so that they don't get shafted that way. Nevertheless, it does not pass the sting test. And Commissioner Schirmack, you're the only one that raised objections to it. I think that you all ought to take a second look at how you let this go down. I am pleased that you're relooking the reassessment. I think that that's a hard political thing to do, but you need to do it. And I congratulate you on your vaccination rate for the county. I think you're still leading the state. I say congratulations for having done that. But this, this collection of delinquent taxes, you ought to hang your heads in shame. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Do you want to move to emails or do you want to have Frank address this?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Let me first thank Mr. Eckle and Ms. Hoda-Wanis for their comments today. This particular topic, obviously, is a topic which has been well discussed and well qualified. And I think, you know, from the perspective of the Board of Commissioners' perspectives and how we handle this, sunshine being the best form of disinfected, which is how we attempt to operate and do operate, I think this process has been very open. I understand at the end of the day, folks can agree to disagree on certain points or principles relative to fees, whether someone believes the fees are too high or the fees are too low. And that's a discussion which will be part of an ongoing discussion and I think a fruitful and beneficial discussion. I think, though, the notion that something was done here insidiously or that something was done inappropriately for some reason other than for the mere benefit of the Scranton residents after being approached by the city to help the city in their delinquent tax collection is just simply wrong and it's disingenuous to suggest it. When this process initially started, remember, this process started in 2016, long before this current administration came into office. The 10% fee of which we're now all getting beat up over is a fee that was approved in 2016 per ordinance that was voted upon and approved by the majority of the commissioners at that time. Now, for various reasons, it kind of died, the discussion between the county and the city for whatever reasons. And then when this administration took office in January of 2020, we were approached in approximately August or September of 2020 by the city of Scranton and requested, they requested of us if we would begin or consider collecting their Scranton delinquent property taxes. We said, of course we would. And then that process began. And that process included everyone. And when I say everyone, I mean everyone from the county perspective, commissioners, myself, Chief Jeffers, from the city perspective, Mayor Cognetti, Mr. Dealey, Mrs. Sheridan, there were a number of individuals involved in that process. From city council's perspective, Attorney Hayes, some of the city council members representing the city council. So there really was a concerted effort and a discussion which was held. I think that's very important that everyone understands. This was not done in a vacuum. And this was not done by Frank Ruggiero or this was not done by Commissioner Dominic or Commissioner Notorianni or Commissioner Schirmack individually. This was done in a concerted effort at the request of the city of Scranton. So from there we proceeded. We drafted the appropriate documents. The city of Scranton was intricately involved. They drafted many of the documents. This went back and forth. Whether someone reads something or doesn't read something, that's a discussion for the city or for whomever. But all I can tell you and all I can represent is that these documents were done in full disclosure and of course with everyone having an opportunity to not only review them, but to modify them prior to implementation. And then ultimately, they were approved first at the city level before they were ultimately approved here at the county level. Now, relative to the contract itself, how did that come about? And I've, again, been very, very public with this and I've been very open. The contract relative to the Joyce Law Firm came about simply as a result of Mr. Joyce's experience and knowledge of the Tax Claim Bureau. So it is true, Mr. Joyce was, is the solicitor for the Tax Claim Bureau and has been since 2018. He became the interim director, I believe, in 2016 or whenever Mr. Kolodziewski retired. He then became the interim director. Paid under 1099 and he was in an interim basis until that position became filled. That position ultimately became filled in November of 2020 with the appointment of Ms. Linity, Barbara Linity. And that was literally at the same time when we were discussing the contracts and the implementation of the Tax Claim Bureau with the city of Scranton for the collection of their Scranton city taxes. And then the discussion started. I had many, many big decisions to make. And most importantly, the decisions I had, I did not have any history with which to base it off of. So in other words, this was a completely new system. There was no prior tax claim office at least for the county that had collected these taxes on behalf of the city of Scranton. So from the very, very beginning, in my discussions with the commissioners, my discussions with Mr. Jeffers and my discussions with Mr. Joyce, I said, to say this situation is fluid is an understatement. It is fluid. It's a new system. We're going to have to continue to meet and monitor all of it. Monitor the processes, monitor the methodologies and monitor the costs and fees, which we all committed to doing. So the program then started. And before that, the 10%, where did the 10% come from? I didn't just reach in the air and rap. Let me tell you where the 10% came from. The prior Scranton city collector, Northeast Revenue, was collecting at a rate of 15%. 5% more than Mr. Joyce collected. Additionally, that 15% was not paid solely by the delinquent taxpayer. That 15% came off of the taxes, came off of the top. So the total amount that was collected of the 15%, that's how Northeast Revenue received their fee, which in turn meant that many of the tax dollars that were going to the city didn't end up going to the city because they went to pay the fee. In return or in relation to what occurred now, 100% of the amount of delinquent property tax collection that is burned or that is collected by the county goes directly to the city, 100% of it. The 10% fee is no longer borne by the timely paying taxpayer. It's borne by the delinquent taxpayer. And to Mr. Eckle's point, well, and that is a significant difference. I can't sit here and tell you right now what that place doing dollars. I can tell you and I can assure you, it's thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. We have literally delivered $3 million or approximately $3 million to the city of Scranton since April. And we've just collected about another million dollars for the month of June. So that 10%, that's where the initial thought of 10% came from. 5% less than the original and it does not come off of the back of those particular taxpayers. It goes specifically on or to the delinquent taxpayer. That's not as a penalty, it's a fee. It's no different. I don't believe that any of your property tax bills that you may receive that we all receive, like Mr. Eckle, I'm a timely paying taxpayer as well. We understand certain times, certain situations arise and folks cannot pay for various reasons, whether it be a pandemic, maybe they had an illness in the family, maybe they, maybe they lost their job, all understand them. And we set up a program to address those situations. So for example, before any liens get filed, there's two notices that blow out to each of those taxpayers, the delinquent taxpayers, two notices. And within those notices, those folks have an opportunity to come down to the county and to address that issue, whether they want to pay their taxes, whether they want to enter into a payment plan, whatever it is. If they do that, there are no liens filed. So then there are no, I'm sorry, there is no 10% fee imposed. This is only for, again, those who are delinquent, who don't address the delinquency before the filing of the lien. And so let me just, to give you some ideas, put this into numbers. There's approximately 70,000 residents, say, in the city of Scranton. There were approximately 2,600 liens filed. Prior to those liens being filed, with those two notices that went out, there were about 1,000 or more taxpayers that came in or contacted the county and made suitable arrangements so they never had a lien filed against their property. Of those folks, that thousand or so folks, that collected was about $872,000 collected from those folks, which of course went directly to the city. There was no fee imposed. There was no 10% fee that Attorney Joyce's firm collected. There was no fee that anyone, per se, collected other than the 5% statutory fee, which is allowed under the Real Estate Tax ELL, which doesn't apply until the liens are filed. So I think it's very important that everyone understand that and I hope folks do understand that, that there really is and was some methodology for this. In addition to Joe Joyce's 10% fee and the methodology of reasoning of how we got there, the other thing we did was this. Based on Mr. Joyce's experience, I also requested that he no longer accept the monthly stipend as solicitor for the Tax Claim Bureau, which he does not. And he no longer billed relative to the Tax Claim Bureau. I have to correct Ms. Hoda-Wanis on one point. Hold on, I apologize, I'm saying incorrectly. You indicated that he's receiving the same, he's doing the same work today that he was last year and last year he received 102 or 103,000 and today he's received 200 and some thousand. That's just not correct. He's not doing the same. He's doing more work because he's now doing all the collection work, he's doing the solicitor work and he still remains on to assist Ms. Linity because he's gotten years and years of experience in the office. You don't have to take my word for it, anyone can ask Ms. Linity the value that that has to her office. So as we started this program, it's become wildly successful. It just happened. It's a great program. And quite frankly, it's a credit to the Tax Claim Bureau and it's a credit to Attorney Joyce and how they work together and run that program. We've delivered record numbers to the city of Scranton and if this pace continues, we're on pace to deliver them, maybe somewhere north of $7 or $8 million this year, when on average they would typically collect approximately $750,000 of delinquent property tax collection each year. Now, to the 5% and why it then got redistributed, as I said to Attorney Joyce, this was a moving target, we all knew it. Again, there's no history here. I didn't know if this program was going to generate $0 and 10% of $0 is still $0 or if it was going to generate millions of dollars, which it has, and then 10% of millions looks and is a large number. Nobody's going to dispute that. Is it fair, is it reasonable? Well, I think that's the reasonable discussion that we can all have and I'm happy to have and will continue to have. And that's the commitment I made to the commissioners and that's the commitment I made to Attorney Joyce, that as this program develops and becomes more involved and we get a better handle and become better educated and become better at doing it, so does our processes and maybe our costs reduce. There are certain set costs that we can't reduce, filing fees and that, but there are other costs that perhaps maybe we can reduce or maybe we don't reduce them. Maybe we can take those funds and use them in another way. I don't mean necessarily just dump it to the county general fund and just out there, but maybe we can set up some type of program, maybe some type of grant program. There's a lot of discussion we can have about it and we're willing to do, but remember, we're four months into it. So based on what I saw thus far, not because of what was published in the media or not because people were suggesting that the contract wasn't fair and reasonable, just simply based on what I committed to do from the beginning with the commissioners and with Attorney Joyce, he and I then sat down again, I think it was in May, looked at what the numbers were at that point and made a determination. Look, he's comfortable with 5%? Yep, I think the numbers are a little bit, you know, higher than any of us anticipated. So what can we try to do and maybe level this off or to try to address it? And our initial thought was, well, there's a significant amount of additional work that's also done, not just with the tax plan, but with the treasurer's office, because once the payment plans are entered into, then they go to the treasurer's office, because the treasurer collects the money, they disburse the money. So folks that are calling regarding the payment plan and paying money, that all goes to the treasurer's office. So that thought was, well, maybe we could take those funds, bring them back to the county and we'll earmark them either toward the treasurer or, you know, somewhere appropriate consistent with what we're doing. And that's where the idea, the notion of the reallocation or redistribution of the 10% came from. Not because I determined or I felt it was not reasonable. I personally believe the 10% is reasonable. I've been open about that, I said that publicly. I understand there's people that disagree and I'm willing to have that discussion and will have that discussion. But we reallocated and that's why and how we did it and that's the reason. So I appreciate everyone's time, I appreciate, you know, everyone's consideration and understanding. And I think this is just going to be a discussion, which I promise you will continue and will be ongoing. We met with the city officials last week and we're continuing to have a discussion with them. This is a good program. This benefits the residents in the city of Scranton. You know what this does most importantly? Is it allows the taxing body to properly budget. Remember, these tax dollars that are coming in are not new dollars. These are tax dollars that were previously budgeted by the city, by the county, by the school district. And so, you know, when these monies don't come in, what happens? People, you know, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta pay from Peter or steal from Peter to pay Paul. That's what you do, you fill the gap, you fill the hole. And then when those dollars come in, then those dollars theoretically go to fill the hole you created to fill the last hole. This, this delinquency tax stream now coming in will allow all of the taxing bodies to most importantly properly budget based on real numbers, which will exponentially help them, all of the taxing bodies, as they move forward in their budget process. Because ultimately what happens, we know this, is if those holes aren't filled and those dollars aren't collected, the taxes have to be raised or get rid. And then the cycle starts all over. And then the cycle is the people that typically are the timely paying taxpayers are the ones that primarily bear the burden because they're the ones that timely pay their taxes. So I appreciate everyone's time and I appreciate the commissioners giving me an opportunity to speak on the issue. Thank you very much.
I'm gonna just have a, or, sorry, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, if that's okay with everybody.
I would.
Okay, the meeting's gonna resume. I believe that we have two emails, Tracy?
Yes. Okay. Our first one is from William O'Malley of Dunmore. Says, hello commissioners, I attended the Real Riders game last night and was shocked to learn that there is no recycling at the stadium. I would like to know why. With the amount of recyclable waste that is generated- With the amount of recyclable waste that is generated each game at the stadium, I believe it is very important to have recycling cans throughout. There's absolutely no reason not to have them. There should be recycling at all county-owned facilities.
I'll look into that. Second, I'll call up.
Okay.
I haven't been to a Rail Riders game, so I can't comment if there's a recycling matter there or not, but I can tell you I'll go look into it. And he's right, there shouldn't be. There should be, and I'm surprised. There is a revision of the manual, so.
Tracy's the second one?
Okay. My second email is from Joseph Savia, No Town. Said, to the Board of County Commissioners, as a concerned citizen, I'm disturbed by the information surrounding county maintenance employees installing a pool at the Honorable Chairwoman Dominic's home in Dunmore. I understand that using county employees on their time off and compensating them accordingly is not against the ethics of the county. If the county employees are being paid as private citizens, can Chairwoman Dominic provide an invoice for transparency to prove to the citizens of Lackawanna County that there isn't anything unethical about the work being done at her home? I'm asking because the county went through this back in April of 2004 with the former prison boardroom, Robert Hillborn.
Okay, so.
And that's all I have.
I believe what, first of all, I want to genuinely thank Mr. Savia for the tone of the email. It's not accusatory, but rather he, you know, seeks information and clarification on an issue based upon a prior incident. I believe the incident with Hillborn was he was using inmates to do repairs at his home. I can assure you that the situation at my house is nowhere similar. So the county ethics allow people or county employees to have side jobs as long as their side jobs do not interrupt or negatively affect their duties in their county job. A lot of our employees, particularly those in roads and bridges and those in maintenance, have side jobs. The person that I, that is at issue here, his name is Tom King, and he has a company called Tom King Construction LLC. I was contacted, this email didn't come as a surprise to me. I was contacted on Thursday by a media outlet, specifically the newspaper, indicating that Commissioner Schirrmack raised ethical concerns about the installation of my pool. So even though I think it's a non-story, I'm going to talk about it. First of all, Tom King is in the capacity that I'm using him is as a general contractor. He and I have known each other for over 30 years. I like to support Lackawanna County businesses. I certainly want to support side businesses of people that I've known for 30 years who reside in my hometown. He and I were talking, and he had informed me that he and a couple other people that I've known from Dunmore put in a pool last year, which surprised me because he, I only knew that he had done fences in the past. I didn't know that he had the skill set, honestly, to do pools. After hearing that, I told him that I was interested in getting a pool and that I was trying to do so. Everybody knows there's like a pool shortage, a chlorine shortage, you can't clean out. It's a process. So I asked him if he would be able to kind of be the general contractor on the job in the sense that he could handle the logistics of the process, which, let me just tell you, is an enormous project. It is a huge undertaking. It is a large, it costs a lot of money to do it. It needs to be done right. And I, you know, it's my property, it's my home, it's my savings. I had to refinance my mortgage and take out a line of credit to pay for it. So I wanted somebody who I could trust handling the logistics of it. For anyone who's ever had work done by, at your home by any type of contractor, electrician and whatnot, you know that they have usually 14 different jobs going on at once, and they'll sometimes fit small jobs in between larger jobs, and they're at the mercy of the weather when they're doing outside jobs. So with regard to the pool, the process, I had to find somebody to buy the pool from. I had to get a distributor of the pools, who I paid directly, not Tom King. I had to have that pool delivered, which I also paid for. Again, not Tom King, not a county employee. He had to make arrangements for the crane service, who I paid directly, to lift the pool and put it in the hole. I also had to hire an excavator, an electrician, a plumber slash pool guy, somebody to do the concrete, and considering it looks like World War III in my backyard, I have to get landscaping done. All those people are independent or subcontractors, and I have paid them directly. The pool's still, it's an ongoing, it's not done yet. I don't know when it's ever going to be done. So with regard to Tom King helping me, I'm a single mom. I really don't have the patience or the time to deal with this ongoing process, which is very, number one, I don't know the process involved in a pool. I only know it now because I just went through it, but, you know, you have to take certain steps. I needed help, and I trusted him. So it was not done on county time, and for purposes of transparency, he put the permit in his company name when he applied for the permit. I could have had all the, somebody, my electrician or my excavator or one of the other subcontractors do the permit. He did it as a general contractor. I don't know how more transparent that can be. I made sure I followed the permit process, I paid the permit fee, I just got the pool inspected, which you have to do on a certain stage, which I just learned yesterday, I think it was inspected. And the only invoice, excuse me, the only invoice I have for Tom King Construction as my general contractor is this one here, and it's in the amount of $1,316. And attached to it are three pages, they're invoices totaling $366 for materials that he bought for my plumber slash pool guy, who he had to find for me because it's hard to find somebody to hook up a pool. And then the labor, that was $366, the labor for the pool and laying the pipe and whatever that entails, I have no idea, is $150, and then plumbing of the filter heater, filter in here was $800. That was payable to the pool guy, whose name is Ben, and who was not employed by the county. The reason why Tom had paid him and bought the materials is because I was simply just not around when he had finished his portion of the job, so he issued the check and then I reimbursed Tom. It's an ongoing process. At the end of it, I will pay Tom for his services as the general contractor. And now knowing the process that is painful when you're putting in a pool, I'm so happy that I have used him because logistically speaking, it is extremely difficult to get people where they need to be, when they need to be at. And I'm not a patient person. So I don't, so it's right here. So I'm not going to distribute it, but if Mr. Savia would like to look at it, he's more than welcome to. I don't believe he's here. I also want to say that I understand, or I was told, that it's an optics issue. I don't, before I became a commissioner, I don't think I've ever heard anyone use the word optics. Now all I hear optic, that's all. And to me, if you're not doing anything wrong, you shouldn't have to worry about optics. And I didn't do anything wrong. I bought a pool for my child, which, again, I saved for and refinanced my house for and took out a line of credit for, to make a nice home for me and my child. That's all I did here. I did not violate any ethical rules. If I was to use a county employee on county time for my financial benefit, obviously that would be an ethical violation. That's not what happened here. Anytime that he worked at my home, and by worked I mean really handled the logistics, it was off county time, and I'm going to pay him accordingly. I can assure you I received no financial benefit because I'm paying all the subcontractors directly. I want to wrap it up, but I really was offended by the allegation that I committed an ethics violation. I don't think anyone should call the media and assert such an accusation, an egregious one, unless you know that an actual ethics violation has taken place. You don't call the media, say that, assert the accusation, and then say, I'll get back to you on which rule she violated, which by the way, there is none. Having an ethics issue or accusations of ethical misconduct as an elected official and as an attorney can tarnish my reputation and can affect my ability, my way to make a living to support my child, and I take that very seriously. So I'm offended by this entire thing. However, as a taxpayer, and for purposes of optics, Mr. Savia was allowed to ask, and I have no problem being transparent and explaining like I just did, but they're really, the facts do not support an ethics violation. I take it very seriously, and I just want to say also that, you know, particularly with this tax lien issue, we have been dragged through the mud repeatedly. And that's okay, because we make tough decisions every day, and you can't please everyone, and people aren't always happy with the decisions, but we try to do what's best for the county and the residents. But that type of reporting is one thing. Making a story out of something when there's nothing there is something completely different. It is, in essence, like I would consider a tabloid fodder. And in my first 18 months as commissioner, I have done quite a few things to help people and for the betterment of the county. My partner and I have as well, together, and you don't see that printed, but you see, you will see, I guess, my pool printed, because apparently that's more important than all the good work that I do as a commissioner. So that's all I have to say. I'm willing to answer any questions if somebody has one.
I think to add to that, it's important to, again, in spirit of transparency so the public is aware, when this issue first, or when it first became aware to us, probably about a week or a week and a half ago relative to some of the allegations, I, as the county solicitor, immediately contacted our chief of staff, and we began kind of an internal review just to ensure from an administration perspective there was nothing wrong or nothing inappropriate, and we've done that. That was done with the assistance of Chief Jeffers, along with our deputy director of HR, Justin McGregor. And I can report in looking at what's occurred, and obviously you've heard what Commissioner Dominic had to say, there have been no violations of our county ethics code or the state ethics code, or any violations under our Home Rule Charter or third-class city code that have been brought to my attention. The individual or individuals that were assisting or were working on the project that were county employees did take pre-approved time in accordance with our county policy. The county policy does not preclude county employees from conducting outside work. And look, as Commissioner Dominic said, and I think she's learning as we all are, optics being what they are and hindsight being what it is, she made a decision based on, you know, trust factor, and again, we can all agree or disagree on whether that was right or wrong, but from a legal perspective and from an ethics perspective, there does not appear to be any violation, and I report it as such to the commissioners with regards to that. Thank you.
I also would just like to add, and then I'm done speaking on topic, that the director of maintenance was informed, my chief of staff, our chief of staff, was informed, there's no story here, and I wasn't hiding it, and also just, there was some other point I was going to make, but I completely lost it. I forget now, never mind.
Just a second.
Give me a minute, maybe I'll talk about it.
It's kind of a long time to make a turn.
Hurry up. That's it. I have nothing else to say. I think, again, I just, oh, what I was going to say, no, no, hold on. What I was going to say is, on the issue of optics, I probably will make another mistake in the future. I'm not going to lie to you in terms of how something looks, but I will never do something that's unethical. I was a lawyer for 21 years. I'm still a lawyer. This political world is new to me, and I try my best to be transparent, and I take my ethics very seriously. But I'm not perfect. No one is. So anyway, moving on. Commissioners, other business. Jerry?
Just glad to see everybody in person. Thank you.
I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.